Well, let's go ahead and get started and call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the November 16th board meeting, which is also our annual board meeting. Welcome to all of you who are visiting us on Zoom and to those of you who will be watching us on delayed broadcast. Will, Amy, will you let me know when the rest of our board members get here?
Yes, Karina is here. I don't see Nico yet.
Okay. Please read with me the mission statement for the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge.
Skills. To successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Heitman, so moved.
Second, Miller.
Heitman, Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. Mr. Sodders.
Yeah, so we have some generous donations from a group of local families to highlight this evening. I believe we have the Lent family on with us. Thad and Carrie, if you guys are able to hear us. We, we want to thank you and, and as well as the Lankelmas, the Shomos and Mr. Carter Strand for your collective donations to this new tennis backboard for the brand new Marshalltown Court Complex. So the floor is yours if you would like to, if you'd like to say anything about your wanting to support this project.
Well, thank you. Well, I guess for starters, it's certainly not about me or even the donors. It's about the fact that what's there and you guys accomplished by putting together, getting the financing, whatever for that tennis facility. You know, all of the donors are avid tennis players, former tennis players for the high school, whatever, all the above. And we're just thrilled to be a small part of it and can't wait to see it get used and help our community flourish. So thank you for accepting the donation. We were more than happy to do.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of November 2nd? Any items of note in personnel?
No, ma'am.
Looking at agency agreements and contracts, we have a proposal from Denovo or De novo, sorry, of the new HVAC systems and equipment for the Marshalltown High School and one for Anson Elementary. Thought exchange terms of service agreement and the attachments with Fulcrum Management Solutions in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred. And to approve quote fourteen forty-six from SMS Tech Solutions in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy cents to renew the Microsoft licenses. We have two special education students. Agreements with Mason City. And with college community. Are there any questions about any of those agreements or contracts?
What is the thought exchange? I tried to figure that out as I was reading it. What is, what is that?
That's the communication tool that we've used the, probably the past three years in order, it allows for people to share their thoughts on questions that we pose. We've used it with students, employees, parents. And then once the thoughts are shared, they can also rate those, which then allows for prioritization in terms of what raises to the top of people's thoughts regarding those questions.
So is this on the school website or where do you find it?
No, we deploy that to individuals when we're seeking their input. So it's something that we push out. We've pushed it out to the community, to parents, to our employees quite a bit. We've used it fairly extensively during COVID to inquire as we developed and implemented the return to learn plans and things such as that.
Other questions? Looking at open enrollments, we have one student open enrolling into Marshalltown from BCLUW. Are there any items of note in bills, Paulette?
No, ma'am.
Any questions on the monthly financial report? Moving on to gifts, grants and requests, we have the gift of thirty-six hundred dollars for the purchase of an additional tennis backboard that was just shared with us by Lentz, Lankelma, Shomo and Strand families. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Miller.
Second, Faltis.
Miller Faltis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries six zero. Oh, nope.
Yeah.
Okay, so seven zero. Welcome, Nico.
Howdy, folks. Apologize for my tardiness.
Well, you missed the really important stuff here at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I had a correction for the minutes too, but.
If you do have a correction, let's go back to those so that you can do that. What is your correction on the minutes, Nico?
It looks like Karina Hernandez was at the last meeting and she's shown as not present.
Did Karina come in late? Or was she there? Okay.
I think she, I think I saw her as second in the agenda or from the minutes, but she's not marked as being present. That's just my.
So do you have that, Paulette?
Yes, I will get that corrected.
Thank you. Thanks, Nico. Karina. Moving on to public comment, I believe you have some public comments to be read, Paulette.
Yes, I do. I've received three public comments via email this afternoon, so I will read those to you. The first one is from Ryan Miller. Dear members of the board, hello, my name is Ryan Miller and I work as a para educator at Marshalltown High School. I full-heartedly enjoy working with the special education students at MHS, but in light of future developments, that has become a greater and greater challenge. In the four years that I have worked for the district, I have tried my hardest to trust that things will work out for the better and that my worries are unfounded. However, events this fall have shattered that trust. In the last week, when the district was informed about the decision to move to virtual learning in a matter of forty-eight hours, para educators were told first that our hours would remain the same, then that they would be reduced across the board to six point seven five hours. As someone who works two jobs to make ends meet, this was immensely painful to hear. I have always counted on my income from the school district to be steady since my hours fluctuate from week to week. I have heard that this reduction was done because maintaining our regular pay was not feasible. Yet in the spring, when the schools were closed, we received our full benefits. This difference in attitude and policy worries me about the future. Should learning remain virtual beyond December 1st? At this time, I am not asking about a restoration of full hours, but I would like to ask about how we got to where we are. Why is it not feasible to maintain full hours for the remaining seven school days in November? What is the plan? Should virtual learning be extended? Will other benefits be maintained? I know that in the end, the decision comes down to you and you alone on the next course of action, that I would ask that there be greater transparency in the process. So far, much of what has happened has felt sudden and thrown together. I know that myself and others would appreciate to be kept in the loop and be party to any relevant discussions. I look forward to the continuation of this conversation and I hope we can find a sufficient solution to any questions or concerns. Sincerely, Ryan Miller. The next email I received is from Mary Borton, who is a para educator at the high school also. Dear school board member, when the change to require remote learning was announced, nothing was said about how it would affect para educators. On Wednesday, a notice was sent saying we were to continue working our regular hours. Friday afternoon, all but thirteen out of the one hundred and thirty-one pairs received a letter saying their hours are being reduced. Anywhere from fifteen minutes a day up to two hours a day. That's on top of indefinitely suspending the fifteen minutes a day you graciously allowed us to make up for the fewer number of days school is scheduled to be in session this year. What changed? If finances were in good shape at the beginning of the year to let us make up the days students don't have to make up, why is it suddenly not financially feasible to keep everyone employed at their regular pay these next few weeks? Where is the money sent to the district for COVID-19 relief? Isn't the district double dipping by accepting money from the state to pay pairs and then having these same pairs file for unemployment? I don't remember a year that the district employed the number of pairs they budgeted for. This year I was told we are twenty short. If this is the case, then the school is already saving more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then she has a calculation in there that was budgeted for para pay, insurance, social security, IBERS, et cetera. Money is also saved where there are late starts and early outs as pairs don't get paid for those hours. The district keeps saying how important mental health is in these stressful times and that staff members need to be aware of their own needs as well as the students' needs. Putting employees through the stress a reduction in pay creates is not helping our wellbeing. What will happen to para pay, insurance and other benefits if we have to stay in required remote learning past November? Pairs need to know what to expect. Thank you for your consideration. Mary Borton. And then the last one is from Gary Martins, who is a teacher, I believe. My name is Gary Martins and I have worked as a teacher in the district for twenty-eight years. I do not pretend to understand all the details that govern the decision-making regarding the treatment of our parents, but I can tell you how much we all count on them in the course of our workdays. That they are chronically undercompensated is no secret either. I learned late Friday that a decision has been made to cut back on the hours allotted for the pairs and I became curious of the criteria that was used to make this decision. The only conclusion that I could reach was that the group that was least able to defend themselves was the group that got the cuts. The pairs in our district are among those people least able to sustain a pay cut and are being treated like restaurant staff when the customer flow is low on a given evening. They are not treated, they are being treated as if they were disposable. The optics of this decision will have long-term effects on MCSD as we continue to struggle to keep our building staff. Under normal circumstances, the turnover rate is high and the people who have stuck with us deserve better. Gary Martins.
Thank you. Moving on. To four oh one. We have Ryan Flack to make a presentation to us.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me on. Hope, hope everybody's doing well. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay. So my name's Ryan Flack. I'm the program coordinator with MEP, the Marsh Town Education Partnership. And I just want to take a few minutes of your time to kind of go over what our program is and bring just some overall visibility to the program that has been around since two thousand and six, just to kind of share the, the good things that we're doing, not just the program itself, but just the students here in the, in the district. So I thought everybody would like to kind of see where we're at and, and the things that we're doing with, with the students. And obviously this is a trying time, but, but a lot of good is still happening and we're excited for the future of MEP. If you want to go one more. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Okay, so what is MEP? Ultimately, we are a college access program for first generation students, providing assistance in a variety of areas. I have a few labeled here that we take a look at and I'll get into the program and exactly, you know, how you can get in it, the students that we work with and so on and so forth. But, but overall, we're a college access program, helping students with the career and college readiness oversight, as well as one-on-one academic advising and then the four-year transfer process when, when they move on to college, whether that's MCC or, or other universities and colleges. The partnership, again, we'll go over brief milestones here in a second. The partnership, it is a collaboration between the school district, MCC as well as business organizations and business leaders. And here you can see a few that are labeled. Yeah, if we keep going down here. So I did just want to highlight quickly kind of the brief milestones here and I'll, I won't read this word for word, but you know, the program has been around, the first year that we, we had MEP recipients was two thousand and six, although the program did start in two thousand and two and took a few years to get things off the ground, but, but in two thousand and six, we did award the first group of MEP scholars. And ever since then, we have awarded a group of scholars every year with a fifty percent scholarship that is good for MCC. And again, I'll get into that. But as you can see here, as it's gone through the years, in two thousand and ten, fundraising did achieve a high number there from, from different organizations that helped fund those scholarships for the student. And then all the way to this past year, you know, this last year, we're, we're at nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We've awarded to over two hundred and fifty Marshalltown school graduates in a fifty percent scholarship MCC. So I mean, since two thousand and six, you know, we're, we're excited, we're proud, we're proud of what we've done, but also moving forward and what the future holds. You know, with, with the students here in the community. As you can see on the next slide here, the, the MEP leadership, kind of going off of the partnership itself. We have a lot of collaboration between different folks representing different organizations, but also business leaders, the, the school district, as well as myself here at MCC and, and then the two other folks as well from MCC that, that make up that leadership team that oversee just kind of our daily and yearly tasks that we have. To get into the program here, serving the students, you know, it all starts in eighth grade with our students and the student recruitment that I, I do. Like I said, it is a first generation program, which means that, you know, when I'm looking to add students to the program, neither parents graduated with a four-year degree. That is one of the requirements. And so we do begin that in eighth grade, going through ninth grade as well. We're still recruiting those students and then through the high school years, just helping students solve problems, you know, we, we do talk about the college process, but also the career process. And sometimes I even back up further, just, just how do we manage our daily, our high school duties and how, what are the things we're doing in high school that, that can make us successful in high school? And then we kind of go from there based on those students. But, but as you can see in high school, kind of the last thing I have there that I'm going to get into is the MEP scholarship that we provide to students when they're senior that are in MEP. When they get to college, they can utilize the MEP scholarship here at MCC. And then I would oversee them myself as an academic advisor and help them with the four-year transfer process. Some of the students do move on and go right into the workforce. And so, you know, just trying to help navigate and help those students through high school, but then also when, when they come out here to MCC. Several of our students, I will note, you know, oftentimes I, I get the question, you know, well, what if I don't want to go to MCC? And I still tell the students, you know, the scholarship does help you. We have a few students right now that are currently at Iowa State, but they're using that scholarship as a reverse credit while they're going to Iowa State or I, we have a few, I think at Iowa as well. They're using that over the winter break or over the summer months to, to utilize that fifty percent scholarship and then transfer it back to the school they are at. So there are some benefits and to doing that as well. So if you would go to the next slide, please. The scholarship itself, and I know I'm talking quick, I apologize. I want to, I want to answer any questions we might have, but the scholarship does cover fifty percent of your tuition fees. And that is, like I said, specific to MCC. And that is for any degree-seeking diploma certificate program. And so we have students here over fifty percent do get a transfer degree to, to move on to a four-year school. But we have several that go into welding, go into nursing, tool and die and so forth. And so we, we do hit on that too, that it is, it is a beneficial degree for, for students really seeking anything. And students that don't even know exactly what they want to do quite yet, we, we try to help them through that. The scholarship is worth, as you can see there, you know, sixty-six hundred dollars, which is, I think, a huge savings for those students that are undecided and those students that want to start off and at MCC and move on from there. So if you would go to the next one, there we go. So the eligibility, and this is where it's kind of been here. We, you know, attendance is a big one, you know, as it is, as it is in the district as well. But ninety percent attendance, ninth grade through senior year with the GPA requirement of two point seven five or a fifty percent graduate, graduated ranking in the class, excuse me. So when students are seniors, if they meet both criteria and are identified as meeting both criteria, we do have them fill out a reflective essay. It's just a two-page essay. And, you know, once they do that, they qualify for the fifty percent MEP scholarship, which is, which is good for them to use three years post-high school. And so if you go to the next slide here, we'll see into the graph. Kind of the last five years, I just highlight, you know, how many students, right now there are nineteen students from the class of two thousand and twenty that chose to utilize the scholarship here right now this year. You know, and you can see the last five classes. So we do have a few students still in the class of two thousand and eighteen that are finishing up, that are, that are on their way to either graduating here this December or again here in May. So, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's a good thing. They have three years to complete their sixty-four hours, if that's what they need based on their circumstances. And we cover them fifty percent of those, those credits. More specific to MHS is the enrollment in the different classes. So our senior class right now, we're right at ninety students. And I think looking at the numbers I ran here within the last month, thirty-six students right now would qualify for that scholarship if they wanted to, which again is fifty percent. Will all thirty-six, will all of them come to MCC? No. But, but again, there are some benefits for, for the scholarship too, if you're not wanting to use it at MCC. But our, yep, sorry, just a second. And our junior class, you can see a little bit lower there. Our sophomores, we were able to get some more in this last year. That was a challenging year. Again, our recruitment does start in eighth grade, but it goes through your freshman year. You do have until the end of the first semester to join in the program. You know, I have projected numbers for freshmen this year, honestly, a little bit slower than I would like, given everything we have, but, but I'm confident, you know, we'll go forward and I would just make sure all the freshmen that can be in the program are in the program. That's the biggest thing for us. I'm looking forward here at the next slide. Overall, like I said, you know, we're, you know, the group's handed out a lot of money and MEP scholarships over the, over the fourteen years that it's been around. This last year alone, you know, just shy of ninety-eight thousand dollars in scholarship for MCC. We had a lot of students that were utilizing the scholarship. We had several who did graduate this past May on into the summer. And we still have some from those classes that will, like I said, graduate this December. But, you know, we're, we've been at last five years, you know, we're excited moving forward. I mean, that's, you know, we, we can't thank everybody enough for all, for all the help and the work that they've given to support the students here in the community. And probably the, I think this is the maybe second, last one. So the types of degrees, like I said, over fifty percent of the students do, do earn their degree. This is our MEP students that come here and graduate, over fifty percent do earn their degree and move on and use that as a transfer degree. But, but several, you know, do get a diploma certification, whether it's utility tech or welding or any of those programs that are intended for immediate work. So, you know, we're, we're trying to increase that number too, but, but overall, we, we just want to make sure that students that are in the school district that can get in the program are getting in it. And we're excited to see where the next few years come, so. Student success, you know, I just have a few success stories here. We could have, I think, a lot more. But here's three of our most recent grads, all of which are currently at MCC and are going to be moving on here. Either this, well, two of them are going to be moving on after this school year and, and one may have one more year depending on how things go. But, but, you know, just a lot of exciting things in store for them and we're excited to see kind of the next round of students. Like I said, you know, it'd be great if, it'd be great if all thirty-six wanted to join us this year, but we'll take as many as, as we can get and would love to award that scholarship to those students. So I know I talked fast. I really wanted to kind of leave it open for any questions I may have. I did attach a newsletter. I guess you guys attached a newsletter. That's our, just our yearly MEP newsletter. A lot of the same information in there, but, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer now or, you know, I'm always, always happy to take a phone call as well.
Are there any questions for Ryan? Thank you for the update, Ryan. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for having me on. Thank you, guys.
Rex, you're ready to talk about the Stop Finder parent application process?
Yes, I am. Thank you for this opportunity. This is our next step moving forward with our transportation software. We put in the TransFinder Plus this past summer, and now we're ready to move to the parent app. And I'm going to walk you through what we're, where we're at and what we're doing. In this whole process, it, it opens up the door for better communication with our parents and for them to see when that bus is going to arrive. If we have to change bus, buses up because bus number's up, we can get that out to them. So they know what bus they're looking for. So we're excited about doing it. We're moving into the sandbox, administrative sandbox, and then into the student sandbox, and then we'll be releasing them. And if we can go to the next slide, please, the key to this is the primary subscriber who is going to get the invite. And that person will activate, go to the App Store and then download that app onto their phone, their iPad or whatever they want. And so they will get information with instructions. They can still call in for instructions. We're working with the MechDyne people and getting everything set up. So first thing that's going to happen once we're ready to invite is they'll receive an email and with the instructions to, an invitation to activate the Stop Finder Plus that will help them. Once they go to their App Store and they download this, there's no cost to them. And they set up their login information, then they're set and ready to go. Next slide, please. On the student, once they get there, the primary contact will have access to whoever's connected with them in the student information system, infinite campus. So if there's two students, three students associated with that who the primary contact is, then that is, they will see those students on there and they will see their name, they will see what grade they go to, they will see what their, what school they go to. And then right below that gives them their bus number, it gives them their pickup time, their drop-off time at the school. And then if there's any other busing that's going on with that student, that is there as well. And they can follow, they, that information is there. So if something gets changed up, a bus number gets changed up or whatever we may need to do, we can get it there, they can see it and have that right there in front of them. So that's going to be, and again, this goes to the primary and I'll get what the primary can do with it here in a little bit, but this lists all the information for that. Next slide, if a student does not have a trip in there, it'll say no schedule. But all our students have trips. We have elected to create the walk zones and put students in walk zones. So if a student is in a walk zone, it is going to show there for the parent that that student is in that walk zone for that school. If they question that or have concerns about that, this, this will be their first alert that that's what it is. They can call us, we can look into it. So we really like this aspect and why we went with the walk zones. Because a lot of times we didn't get notices out, our parents weren't sure. We have several things in place now to make sure to calm everything down and work through these walk zones. So this is going to be nice. And again, it appears just like any other student, bus times or whatever, the walk times to what school is there. Then if this parent, go down one more. Okay, now the parent wants to look at the route. The beauty of this app is the parent can go in and actually see the route. Okay, so it is really important for these parents to control who has access to, to these routes, because it'll only be for their students, what routes their students are on. But we don't, you know, we don't want to just share it wherever. So they, they have apps control of what bus their kid is on and the route and where that, where that bus stops at. So when they click on the route, the quickest way is they click on that route, up comes a map. And this is where they can start, set up their dual alerts to alert them how soon the bus is going to be at their stop. So you see the different stops on there. They're going to know which one is their stop based on the information. And here's where they can go in and they can click on that bell to set up their geo alert zone. So they will get alerted when that bus enters that zone. So let's go to the next slide, please. Here's, after they hit the bell, it'll pop up the geo alert. And that parent will click on that and they can name their alert, like a corner, whatever, whatever they want to name that alert because they can come back, excuse me, they can come back and edit that alert. They can view the history of their alerts, they can do everything. We're going to recommend that they pick an alert that is about a two to three minute timing away from their house. Not within the one-minute type, so, because it takes a little bit for that to go up to the satellite and come back down. So we're going to kind of talk to them, making sure that they give themselves enough time for when that bus hits that alert, they got time to get themselves organized and get out to the stop and be ready. So this is really going to be a nice feature for our parents is they can set this up anywhere on that route that they want to have that alert. So if a parent's sitting at work, they can see where that bus is. If the student has a phone, the parent can share that with the student, they can see where their bus is. So they name it and next screen, please. A red dot comes up and they can move that red dot to wherever they want to move it on the route. And the route is the blue, blue area, that's route. The red is the pickup for this particular one. They move that to that route and when that bus enters that, they will get, get an alert on their phone that the bus has come into their alert zone. They can set up a couple of different alert zones if they want. They can set up as many alert zones as they want. And it's totally up to the primary person what they, how they want to set that up and set those alerts up. Then once I get that up, then I'll, when everything is up and going, a little bus appears and starts making the trip. And if they're watching it live, they can watch that bus move and be able to identify where that bus is at in relationship to where their geo zone is, where their stop is at. So they will be able to, if they want to, follow that bus. And again, that's why we're, we're really looking at them keeping control of who has access to their information and their student and that, and the bus course. So it's kind of a new, a neat thing that they're going, I believe they're going to like. I believe the kids are going to like, you know, if the parents share it with them in where it's going to be a very transparent thing for everybody to see that has the access. And only note, they can only see the route that their child is on. So if they have kids on a couple of different routes, they'll have a couple of different maps that they can go to to see. They can't see any other routes except the routes their, their son or daughter is on. Next screen, please. Then they, this is where, this screen, they can go in on their app and they can share. They can click down here and they can share. They can share with their caregivers, they can share with grandma and grandpa, they can share it with whoever they feel needs to have knowledge. Now, that person gets the same access as the primary. So they, they, you know, eventually there are going to be some controls in there. But if there's a push-out information, that whoever they share that with, they will get that push-out information. So this is going to be one of those we need to do a lot of education on. And we're hoping they share it with their caregivers and we get the right caregiver information. But they got to remember too, when they switch daycares or whatever, they got to go in and remove that person off. If they don't, they will stay on there. And right now it looks like we could have access to go and remove, but we really don't want to remove somebody without the primary person saying remove them if they forget how to remove them. So this is a very big one that we're going to have. And also there's a, right there, you see a message, they can send to us a message here, Transportation. They can go in there, click on that and send us my kid's not riding, whatever they, they need. Or their kid's been off for a few days and they're going to start riding again. They won't necessarily need to call us, they can send it here and we can get them back and get everything set up again for their kid to ride. Then that goes into our push-out announcements. If we want to roll to the next slide, please. We're going to be able to receive announcements and we're going to be able to push out announcements. When we, when they receive announcement on their end, down on that little stop, there's going to be a message, a number come up and alert them that they have a message. They click on that and it goes to the message. We will be able to push messages out if it goes to the next slide. If we have a delay or a bus is held up someplace or whatever there may be, we can push out to the parents a notification that a bus is running late or whatever, or we're doing a too late. And we can, we can do it by route. We don't have to do everybody. So in this, we can just do our route buses, we, we can do our rural buses. We don't have to do our walk zones, but we can. So this allows us to support Adam when he's putting information out. Adam and I would need to be on the same page when something, if, if he wants us to push something out or talk when we're going to push something out. So they're getting the same message and the same info. So this is a, this is something that we've been wanting. It is something that Theron has had on his radar for the last couple of years since I've come on. We are excited about moving forward with this. And the catch to this all is, it is only as good as our information the parent gave us in Infinite Campus. If they don't keep their phone numbers up, they don't keep their addresses current, this is a struggle for us because it won't be accurate on going out. So we got to remind our parents to make sure that they keep their information accurate. And if there's a different primary, they, making sure that we get that set up correctly so that, or they're going to share it with the other primary. So there's a lot of things that we'll be working on in the next couple of weeks, getting out there before we ever get parents totally up in. And we want to pilot with a few parents to make sure things run smooth with this. So this is our parent app that we've been talking about. It goes with our Route Finder Plus that we updated, improved. We have, which has helped us a lot in terms of our routing and everything. And now this is the next step and we will be slowly rolling this out to our parents.
Questions for Rex?
If I am grandmother and picking up my grandchild, they, if the parent sends me the information, do I already need to have Stop Finder, the application downloaded on my mobile device?
You will, I'll download it on the mobile device, whichever one you're using, just like the primary. And then it's there for you and you can access it anytime that you need it with us. But yeah, you will go to the App Store and download it if you're grandma or grandpa or daycare. But it has been invitation from the primary and then you set up your own password for it.
In my experience, there is always an opportunity to ensure updated mobile phone numbers and addresses. So maybe Nora could chime in on what our success rate is on that with getting updated information to ensure the most successful fulfillment with the application. But it sounds great, Rex.
Well, I can, Nora will jump in here too, but I can answer that. Usually they call us and, and will tell us and we remind them to go to their school and let their school know. And as soon as we get something kicked back to us, then we talk with the school and then we begin the, trying to search out and get, get the corrected information the best we can. Nora, did you have anything you could add to that?
Not really. For the, the small minor changes, usually that's handled at the building level. And then the building secretary will update Infinite Campus. Stacy Mommer, our district registrar, will handle some of the larger changes like guardianship and things like that. But we can take those requests, but usually those are handled at the building.
So if a child has one of those more complicated custody arrangements where they go to one parent on Monday and Tuesday and a different parent on Wednesday and Thursday, do you have the capability to program this so it, it knows all that?
That's where I'm going into the administrative sandbox and working on because we have three of those cases and trying to figure out, because we can't just do alternative sites. Because if they're, if it's alternating days type of thing, it's a lot easier than one week here and one week here. We got one family that changes on Wednesdays. And trying to figure out how we can get this software to recognize that on Wednesdays which bus they're on. So that is a challenge we're going to be working through in the next couple of weeks because we've got three of those that are like that. So Jan, I, I can't answer for sure until I dig into that a little bit more because when I asked during my training this last week, that, they were stumped by how to possibly do that. So we're, we're digging in.
And then the other question I have is a child misses the bus. Does the parent get an alert that their child was not on the bus?
Unfortunately, not with this software. All that, all that, that parent will notice the bus was there, but will not know if the child's got on yet or not. That is a different part of the software that eventually we'll be looking at to get on, you know, where they record on, record off, and then that would alert the parent whether they got on or didn't get on.
Mike?
Yeah. I have a question.
Go ahead, Karina.
Okay. Um, Rex, I'm sorry if you already said this, but, um, did you say the messages are live? So if like a child's not going to ride the bus that day, would the bus driver know not to make that stop if it's that individual child's home?
They would, it would come to here to central office and then they would, the driver would get notified right away. Yeah, that's, the, the push back and forth communications is live.
Okay, good. And then is this being used also for the after-school programming as far as Twenty-First Century or what is the other program? Migrant?
It can be, but I, all I have to do is set up a specialized bus number for them and they send that out to those parents. So yes, that can, can be set up.
That would be awesome considering it's dark now.
Yeah.
Rex, this is Mike Miller. At the beginning of your presentation, you said something about MechDyne helping you with this. Can you give me a reminder of what it is that they're doing?
That's more probably what Amy can answer. But Amy reached out to MechDyne with some of the, some of our things for, to help parents through. So we're providing MechDyne this information and they will be helping parents walk them through the download process of how to put this on their phones. They can call us, but it's just a partnership that Amy worked out because of some other applications with the remote learning and everything. So it's, just gives us opportunity to have one more person in the front lines to help parents if they struggle.
So we've just hired them to do like tech support for, for people to have troubles with their downloading this on their phones?
Yeah. Amy?
Yeah. And Mike, this is part of the same agreement that we've already paid for. It goes into December. So we just thought it'd be another great way to continue the partnership that we've already established for that helpline.
Thank you.
Any more questions? It's good to see in practice what it is that we've approved money for, Rex. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Would our student reps, please, visit with us about their update?
Idea to present was the National Honor Society Ceremony was supposed to happen this week and it is now postponed until April. So there was forty-two juniors elected into it this year, basically, this semester. And so now the ceremony's in April. So that's the news update there.
So another thing that happened this weekend was the state swimming. It went successfully. It was at the Y. We had three divers that qualified and then two relays with the same four girls that went. And for diving, Hannah Taylor placed ninth and then Mia Rasmussen placed fourteenth. And then for swimming, my relay placed twenty-sixth and then thirty-first, so.
And then so for dance team, their dance, their state dance competition is going to be on Thursday. But due to the whole shutdown and everything, they just, they get, were given the opportunity to submit a video as if they were attending. So they're, they, they recorded that yesterday and they were able to get dressed up in their uniforms and submit those videos. And then their state, their state meet will actually be on Thursday. They won't be attending it, it'll just be the, the videos they submitted.
Ladia, congratulations on the state qualification and competing. Was it a little bit different with no spectators there?
Um, it was, yeah, it was a little different, but there's still, the energy was still there. So it didn't feel a whole lot weird, odd. It didn't feel a whole, it didn't feel weird, I guess. That was a weird sentence.
So it was just the teams, the coaches and the people working the event, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies. We'll look forward to school being back in session the next time we see you. Dr. Ryan, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I appreciate your time and I apologize. I'm not sure where my slide looks a little funny at the bottom, so we could just kind of overlook that. But I just really wanted to speak with you quickly and briefly here about the staffing for the Human Resource Department because I'm not sure, you know, how well-informed we are about every department. Obviously, there's a lot going on in a large school district. So I wanted to speak with you about the staffing that we have. Compare that to some other districts that are similarly sized. And then the ultimate ask is that we add an administrative assistant. And so I'd like to talk to you about that today. So the current staffing here at MCSD with HR duties, so that would be myself. And then I have one administrative, administrative assistant. Her name is Cindy Sisneris. She is amazing. To give you an idea of our size, we have, we have over eight hundred current permanent employees. And then when you add in substitutes and temporary employees, we're at over nine hundred. So it is the two of us doing HR duties for over nine hundred people. And, you know, when I say HR duties or responsibilities, that can vary from district to district or organization to organization. So I will not read this, but here are some of the major things that we are tasked with on a daily, an annual basis in our HR department, how we structure things. So I'll just leave that there for a moment so you can read that if interested. Okay, go to the next slide. So it was really important to me, you know, as I speak with my colleagues and my peers across the state and I hear about their staffing and how they organize their teams, to make sure that when I came to you folks, that we had an apples-to-apples as much as possible comparison. So first, what I wanted to do was make sure that I compared districts that were comparable in size. You know, I didn't want to compare our district staff with Des Moines, for example. That wouldn't be fair. So I took a look at the served enrollment of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And I, I took a look at the nine districts, the four and five right before us and right above us as far as, as served enrollment. And when you take a look at their staffing, their average is two point six individuals on their staff. And that is two point six individuals who are doing the same things that we are. So if, let's say, one, one district had actually four people, but one of those four was their benefit administrator, I did not include that person because here at Marshalltown, our benefits are handled in the business. I did not include that person because here at Marshalltown, our benefits, um, are handled in the business office. So their, their size of, of staff who are doing exactly what we're doing is 2.6 and obviously we have the two. Um, so like I mentioned there, it didn't include staff who are responsible for benefit administration. Workman's comp, that's not here at Marshalltown. That's not handled in, in my department. So I didn't include those folks. Okay. Um, really the ask here is, um, for help, for assistance. We are, um, keeping our head above water and we are trudging along. But my biggest concern here is that we are very reactive and we are very day to day. Because we have over 900 employees and only two of us, it's, um, I really feel like we are hampered in our ability to be more react, or I'm sorry proactive, we are reactive. I think I said that wrong. We are very reactive or we want to be proactive. I want to be able to focus on bigger things like recruitment and retention, um, instead of just answering the emails, um, of, you know, simple questions, for example, I want to be able to do more directorial work. Um, one in my, in, in my, my idea, my vision, which is similar to other districts, um, we would have one administrative assistant focusing on certified staff and one on classified staff. And then other duties that are, that can kind of bridge between the two or, or are applicable to both groups, those would be split. So for example, one person would be the A-SOP or time management go-to. One person would handle all FMLA for the district. You know, one person would handle this application or this application. So their main tasks would be split between certified and classified staff. And then the other tasks, um, they would just be assigned, you'd be assigned, um, one or the other. And so just some basic things, this would be a position that is paid as any central office, um, administrative assistant. So it's 1280 an hour, or if they have a bachelor's degree or five years of direct experience. Um, that starting wage is 1580 an hour, a 40-hour work week, 12-month employment, um, which is, um, all of us in central office located in my suite. And then, um, same benefits as, as everybody else. So this would be adding an administrative assistant to the central office staff to help us handle the, um, over 900 employees that we have. And like I mentioned, I think the, you know, from my perspective, the, the biggest help that this would be is to really help me focus on, there are a lot of components of goal two and goal three of our strategic plan that are really, um, in the backseat because again, we're trying to just handle those day-to-day tasks. So a lot of the sap, staff development, a lot of the communication and engagement components of our, of the strategic plan, I could devote a lot more time to focusing on, on those. Um, my main focus of the next 12 months, once we are, um, let's keep our fingers crossed through this COVID mess. We really need a job description for every single position in the district and we do not. And that is a main, that's a major concern, not only from an HR perspective, um, but also as it lists there, it helps with, you know, the recruitment and onboarding. It helps with performance evaluations and it helps, um, with workman's compensation. And that actually results in actual cost savings for the district. Excuse me, when we have high workman's comp claims like we do, um, one of the, the best defenses and the best ways to really help those employees too, is to have a solid job description. So we can look at what are some alternative duties that we can have this individual do? Or giving that to the physician and saying, are they able to perform the job? If not, how can we accommodate? Um, and so those are some things that are just really important and we do not have a job description for every position. I would also really like to, to customize some of the annual trainings that we have for all staff. So every year, you know, you go through the annual trainings, but what I'd really like to see is a set of, or, or an annual training for the paras, for example. And it would focus on the board policies and the parts of the handbook that are most important, um, to those folks. Because you know, we have so many board policies, there's no way, well, I shouldn't say that, not a lot of people read them. And so kind of doing a highlight, but that would be different for each employee group because we all have different needs. So I'd really like time to create those trainings. And then the last point is just that these items just are not given. I'll be honest, they're, they're not given sufficient attention right now because we are managing the day-to-day of all of our employees. We need more hands. We are, when you compare to similarly sized districts, we are understaffed and I would really like to see us. Um, I don't feel necessarily like we're a 4A district, 4A district. I feel like we should be having 40 applicants, for example, because people want to come here, they know our name, they know what we're all about. And I'm not able to go to career fairs, um, as much as I'd like. I'm not able to get into the university classrooms to recruit teachers, for example, or the MCC career fairs. Um, and so I, I would really like to kind of have that more, um, attractive for a feel. And I, I feel like that part of that is HR responsibility and having more assistance would really help us, um, not only recruit, but then really focus on retention. Um, I really think that that would be helpful. And the last thing that, um, I'll say is we do, we have, we have a phenomenal staff here and I, I, I feel like they would be better and best served if we did have another assistant to attend to their needs. Um, for example, I am out today, I was out of the office today and I was trying to keep up with email as much as possible. And I just, one of the biggest things I have and it, one of my priorities is customer service. And when people only have, um, you know, myself, they only have me or they have Cindy to go to. Um, time, when one of us has gone or both of us, um, that lag time and then they're waiting on an email back. And I hate that. And if, you know, just that extra help would be, um, help, helpful. And then like I mentioned, I could focus on larger initiatives and longer-term planning in order to attract strong candidates, improve our retention rate and continue to develop our employees so that we can better prepare our learners to be citizens in a diverse world. And that, at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. And so again, my ask is that I, I, I'm seeking approval to add another administrative assistant to the HR department. I welcome any questions you may have.
Uh, Theron, I assume that, um, you approve of this and you, you, you want this to happen too?
Yes, um, I've been involved in evaluating staffing for HR for, in each of my last two districts. And in this district, it's been a topic, a conversation, um, with the former HR director when I first came in. And, um, we wanted to work through some issues prior to moving forward. And then we had some changes within that department that we waited on. And then we had the HR director leave. So this has really been five years in the making to figure out what exactly we needed and the right time to, to try to bring this forward. Um, pre-COVID, this was a need, but I think COVID's even further amplified, um, the stress in terms of available time and energy for HR to, to take care of all the stuff they're supposed to take care of. And then there's a lot of new stuff. So, uh, yes, I would be supportive of us adding an administrative assistant to HR. And I believe that would put us in the norm for like-sized districts and the level of support. It won't be more than most, it won't be less than most. Right now we're less than most districts are size.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Sounds, um, like you did your research, Dr. Ryan, and, uh, it looks like it's pretty detailed. And based off of what other similar comparable, uh, districts, it, it seems to be warranted. And maybe I'm biased and skewed being in HR, but I think you hit it on the head, Dr. Shutey. With, uh, this pandemic, it has not gotten easier, I'd say. So it seems as always justified and warranted, something to look into for sure.
And a rec, a recommendation to the board would come at the next meeting.
And I think Nora, that with, um, the book we're reading about the changes that need to be happening in schools and the things we're seeing happening because of this whole COVID situation, your idea about the job descriptions, that's going to get really complicated.
Well, well, to be, to be honest, we should, we should always have them. We already should have them. It shouldn't be, um, there shouldn't be any change. The problem is that we do not have them. And another problem is, you know, with COVID, to Theron's point, um, tracking these types of leaves and everything, um, no exaggeration, takes roughly three hours in the morning to make sure I, um, have all the paperwork and going through the process, um, and communicating with the supervisors. And so it's just a, an, another example of how we can't get to those higher, um, needs when we are just trying to focus on getting through the day. And so it would be very helpful to have another competent staff member. Um, Cindy is amazing. She has been with my department now, um, well, right since right before COVID. And she is absolutely phenomenal, but, um, we just were drowning.
Just clarify, we do have job descriptions. We just simply don't have them for all positions and many of the existing ones need to be updated. Um, essentially it's been a priority that anytime we've needed to replace or we hire for positions at that given time, we automatically update those positions before we advertise, uh, for them. But we have, you know, of our 900 employees, there's a lot of specialized positions that aren't accounted for with job descriptions, I would say, in a variety of, um, or re, employment arenas.
You will see this item on the next agenda listed as an action item. Thank you, Nora. Speaking of doing things differently, Dr. Shutey, would you move ahead with the book study?
I think we've got a, uh, short video to open.
The true bottom line is that public schools produce immense cultural, social and economic benefits to everyone in the community, whether or not you have children in school. And they need your support. To be clear, I'm not talking about money, although money is always needed. I'm talking about you're taking one or more of a series of steps that foster increased student success. The easiest thing you can do, regardless of your position or role in the community, is occasionally reach out to your superintendent or members of his or her staff and tell them how much you appreciate their efforts. I've spent hundreds of hours inside America's public schools, from suburban palaces to schools that serve fewer than a hundred kids. And in every school, a 40-hour work week is nothing. 50 hours, 60 hours is routine. We're asking these people to teach the most diverse, demanding, and by far the most distracted generation of students the world has ever seen. A little show of thanks goes a long way. You can also help by speaking up when you hear someone proclaiming that our schools should just teach the basics. People make this statement from boardrooms to coffee shops with a tone that suggests that all problems are solved and no further discussion is required. Look, I get the desire to return to a seemingly simpler time, but the statement ignores the facts. No one alive went to school that just taught the basics. For over a hundred years, our elected officials, liberals, conservatives and independents, have been shifting non-academic duties to our public schools, forcing our educators to compensate for parental and societal neglect. It might feel good to vent, but it serves no constructive purpose. We have to respond to the world as it is. And the easiest way to help is to provide your family, friends and neighbors with a list of mandates that smother your schools. Your superintendent will be happy to provide them. In a similar vein, you can help your superintendents and the people on their staffs by speaking up on social media. No district can monitor every outlet and respond to every broadside of misinformation or lies. So to borrow a phrase, if you see something, say something. I'm not suggesting that you embroil yourself in a no-win tit-for-tat war of words with every cranked up critic sitting around in his drawers posting negative comments. You don't even have to directly respond, just balance the ledger. Every school I've ever visited was overflowing with examples of stories of progress that the staff was eager to share. Posting these stories is a powerful antidote to viral negativity. And if you want to wade in on a specific school-related topic, your district leaders will be happy to supply you with accurate information. One of the most important things you can do to help is to make it clear to your elected officials at every level that you support your public schools, you recognize their importance and you trust that they share your views. You can also ask how long it's been since they've visited one of your schools. Speaking of visiting, if you have the time and inclination and when conditions allow, volunteer to help your schools where your presence would be most helpful. I guarantee that it will be a rewarding experience. In fact, eating in the cafeteria with middle school kids will be absolutely life-changing. If you have the resources, donate money to your schools directly or through your local education foundation. And if you do nothing else, share this video with the people in your professional and social networks. This, of course, is a partial list. I'm sure your superintendent and principals will be eager to suggest more. The point is, there's a range of actions you can take that costs nothing. And anything you do to help your schools improves your quality of life. At the close of the Constitutional Convention in Philly in 1787, Mrs. Eliza Powell, the mayor's wife, one of the richest and most politically astute women in the colonies, asked Benjamin Franklin what kind of government the delegates had created. He famously replied, "A republic, if you can keep it." From the founder's perspective, the key to keeping it was public education. In Jefferson's words, "An educated citizenry is a prerequisite for our survival." And to that end, he insisted that schools should be created at public expense to educate every description of our citizens from the richest to the poorest. Adams underlined the point by proclaiming, "No expense for this purpose should be thought extravagant." Since the signing of the Constitution, 12 generations of Americans have worked to expand the reach of the word "we" to include citizens of every race, gender and ethnic background. And public schools have sat at the heart of this process. Today, a time when rapid social and economic change incite a drift towards tribalism that strains the bonds of our social fabric, your teachers, administrators and the people who support them remain on the front line, ready and able to help all of us achieve our nation's most lofty goals. But if 30 years in the field have taught me only one thing, it's this. They cannot succeed without your support. Thanks so much for watching. Stay safe.
So part four that we, uh, embarked in for this meeting, which is going to be divided between this meeting and the next meeting is titled, "The Great Conversation", which is, uh, the main thrust of what Mr. Volmer says needs to happen in order to effectively educate and engage. And, um, for the purpose of receiving input from our community stakeholders as it and for the purpose of receiving input from our community stakeholders as it relates to how we together can help all students be successful and positioned for future success. And a good portion of, well, all of what we read for today was focused on what he considers or calls "the formal track" of the Great Conversation. And then a few more chapters into what we'll read for next week. Finishes off the formal track and then talks about what he refers to as the informal track of the Great Conversation. So, I'd open it up to takeaways that people had relative to what Jamie describes as the Great Conversation.
I think one of the most interesting things that he had to say about the formal track was that it would take place in the community's turf and at their convenience. So many times, we think that we're doing things at parents' or community members' convenience or comfort level, and we always hold these things at school. When I was still doing parent-teacher conferences, we found that taking parent-teacher conferences to the home, to a church, to, well, actually, I have to be quite honest, we did do a couple in a bar, got us far more bang for our buck than asking parents who were uncomfortable to come to school. So the more that we took the message to the parents, the more input and the more support that we got from them. I think that that's key, one of his key points in talking about the formal track and taking it to the community at their convenience.
Adam and I chatted a little about this today where some of the, you know, it talks about community mapping and pinpointing people who are active in our community. And sometimes schools might be hesitant to reach out to churches and pastors and religious affiliations just because of, you know, the separation there. But I liked how he pointed out, you know, a lot of them are prominent in our communities and societies, and partnering with them wouldn't be a bad thing, and especially if it's apparent that it doesn't necessarily mean we're implementing anything here. We're just involving all entities.
I'll piggyback on that. And a couple of weeks ago, I had a conversation with Adam too, so great conversation about including the community. And number four on page 148, not number four, number three, where we must help every member of the community understand what he or she can personally gain from the creation of a great school. So that to me tells me, you know, we, our message to our community really needs to be great and positive and very direct. And letting them know what is their gains and, and on supporting us. And not only that, but like Adam said to me, I'm just making sure they're advocates for us, you know, they're, they're talking good about us, and we're feeding them the good information and the accurate information. So they can be in our defense, you know, when, when they hear negativity or rumors or whatever. So I think that's very important, and that's a lot of what we talked about as far as our communication goals. You know, making sure that we were putting our information out, and it's always, it's not just always positive, but it's always the correct. So, yeah, that's my input.
One of the things he brought up that I know that some people are uncomfortable with, but I think is really important, was the idea of, especially with some of these more vocal people, having them come and, and shadow a teacher for a day or come to school for a day, maybe spend a half a day in a third-grade room and a half a day in middle schools. A lot of these people really don't know what's happening in school. Now, their perspective was different when they were a student. Because honestly, personal computers have really changed the way we teach, especially in areas like writing. You know, it's just the expectations that we have of our fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade writers is much higher because of the ability to edit with a computer. So we're teaching the kids skills of their age because they can do it. But I don't think the public really even realizes that.
Sorry, I didn't know if I should raise my hand or not. One of the things I liked the most about what I read was on the very first couple pages about the Great Conversation, where they talked about no new money or new personnel are required. And so I think that a lot of times we get paralyzed in decisions because we're like, how are we going to afford that? Who's going to be able to do that? Who's going to help us? And Jamie did a really nice job of laying out a path to getting the work done that didn't require extra people or resources, and mostly because he was able to capture that when you have either the informal or the formal track, that they're very synergistic, was the word that he used. And I appreciated that because I know, I mean, Marshalltown is unique in a lot of ways, but in terms of community relations, I've never seen anything quite like it, meaning like the tennis example tonight, like somebody thought of that at the moment, and bing, 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 like four other people are right in line to help the community, to help Marshalltown. And I've seen that too with our collaboration with the AAAs, that he talks a little bit about educational service centers in here. And I just am always impressed with how like the community college, the universities, the AAAs, the Department of Ed, how everyone wants to come in and support us in the work that we do so that we can increase student achievement. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that he called or characterized business leaders or businesses as potentially rogue elephants, was the word that he used. And that they could become bullies in these like committees and groups. And I, I've seen that and I've experienced that in my past, but I think like the program that we saw at the beginning tonight, MAP and the work of MBEA and those groups, like I just kept making connections as I read this to things we have in Marshalltown and thinking, well, that's not really how it is here. Or, you know, wow, we've really been able to get past that roadblock or barrier that Jamie notes that other places maybe have gotten stuck on and not been able to move. So anyway, that was just kind of my, my takeaway that I think that we've worked on a lot of the foundational elements of the Great Conversation, which is something to be really proud of.
I, I really liked the entire section about the community mapping. I think, you know, like we used to said, Marshalltown is just such a unique, interesting, wonderful place. And I think part, part of the deal is we have kind of a, we're in between the worlds of more urban, I guess, school, more of an urban school district and more of a rural school, school district in the sense that I think all of us who, who live here, I think most or all of us grew up in this area, who are, who are here tonight as part of this meeting. You know, I think we all each have our own ideas and our own understanding of the map of the community. Maybe we have it in our heads. But I think there would be, I, I just like the idea of a purposeful actual mapping session or, or some sort of effort to actually map out for our collective understanding our incredibly multifaceted community. Because we're not gonna, we're not the type of community where we can reach everybody in the community with the same exact message in the same exact place, which is a little, going back a little bit to meaning people more or less where they are on their turf. Not everybody in Marshalltown has the same turf. And so that would be the value of, of a conscious mapping effort, I think.
Yeah, I agree with, with Adam. That was the thing that I, you know, in reading these chapters, that, that chapter on community mapping, I just think would be a real fascinating and eye-opening process to do in, in our community, to some intentional sitting down and looking and saying, okay, what, what are the groups and who are the people and, and that are making up that, you know, that make up our, our community? I think that'd be really interesting to do.
And I know at, in the aftermath of the, I believe it was the tornado in 2018, we, it wasn't, I mean, obviously a very different and specific situation, but in my mind's eye, as I was reading that section, it brought me back to that community meeting in Fisher Community Center that I think probably most of, or, or maybe, well, ma- many of you I know for a fact were there, where you had different groups and you had all of these different, you know, you had religious groups, you had folks from the school district, you had folks from business and industry. I mean, it was pretty incredible just how many different groups of people that got into the, physically into the room together, of course. Where, under the current circumstances, that'd be a little harder, but we could get people into a, you know, a, a virtual room, or maybe after this COVID period passes, we might be able to go back to that sort of thing. But, but that's what came up in my mind's eye, just sort of a community, that's a community turf area that we could go to and we could facilitate that kind of process.
We did something similar with our community coalition several years ago, and it was something more kind of like the tornado, but it was more for resources for families due to any immigration, deportations, or detains, or, or just family just being absent from, and, and families getting separated or whatever. But it was very, very beneficial. So that, that's something that I would totally support for us to do in our community because it is beneficial to see what, what we have and, and bring all those, all those people together. And that, that chapter actually reminded me of what we did. I'm like, oh, we did that. We did that for resources. So that's neat to see.
Now, as I was reading through that, it, it reminded me of a much more detailed and elaborate approach that districts historically use when they're trying to educate and sell their communities on passing bond referendums. And it kind of sort of reminded me a little bit about the, the tour that I made to talk to the various entities about Bobcat Ready to get their endorsements that just didn't go beyond that key stakeholder, I guess, level for the most part. But what was really intriguing to me was how he promotes, he says that school board members, district administrators, building administrators absolutely need to support the Great Conversation, but he really recommends other people volunteer, teachers particularly, to actually facilitate those conversations at the ground level because generally, parent and/or the community's respect and trust with teachers or school employees other than, you know, the leadership. So I thought that was pretty intriguing as well.
Matt, Mike, Sarah, anything to add?
I don't know if I have anything new to add. You know, the, the Great Conversation about trying to build community support around it, I think is really important. I agree that, you know, one of the challenges is trying to have a focused conversation with the community involvement so that we're all working to the same goal.
I don't have anything to add this time, B. Thank you.
I don't either.
Well, thank you all. Jan, were you going to say something?
Oh, just he also mentioned about displaying student work, and I happened to be in the central office briefly today and noticed all the artwork that's up. And I'll bet many of our businesses would be more than willing to, to display samples of student work if the kids wanted to do that. And it, it's another way of just letting the community know what our students are doing. What's happening in the schools.
Dr. Shudey, what's our next reading assignment?
We will finish the book for the next board meeting, so it's chapters 19 through 26, pages 161 to 207. And it'll be the last few chapters talking about the formal tract and then the informal tract.
Okay.
Well, I think it's my turn, B. Okay, well, I hate to be a resounding gong, but I am here to talk to you about wireless hotspots. Since we have transitioned back to remote, just for a short time, we consider it very important that our students have internet access as we're asking them to do remote work. So although we have done a couple major surveys about internet access, we've actually found many more students who don't have internet access, and we felt we needed to support that. So I believe 70 additional Verizon Wireless Hot Spots will be sufficient in supporting our district, whether or not we are in school, or if there's ever a time in the future that we would need to pivot back to remote learning. We, things kind of trickled down today a little bit, so we're sitting right over the 500 mark of us getting hotspots out. So we have a few left, but I think we're doing okay in supporting the students with hotspots.
Questions for Amy?
Yeah, getting the hotspots now, giving them enough time before we get done.
I'm sorry, Karina, I couldn't hear you very well. Can you ask that one more time?
Let me turn off my camera. My internet connection. So is there time to get them enough time before we come back and hopefully we can back?
So actually, this cost is under the $25,000 that I typically ask for approval. So I went ahead and purchased these devices already. We just want to be really open and transparent with the board and our community how we've been spending money as it relates to COVID expenses. So we already have the devices and we already have them in the hands of students.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
May I have a motion to purchase the Verizon Wireless Hot Spots? Cost of their data, months, in the amount of $18,805,700.
So moved.
Second.
McGuinness, Segura, all in favor, five by six, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion can be seven. Amy, can you tell us why we're getting feedback?
I'm not getting feedback. If a lot of people are, it might be my microphone. I will shut it off.
I think it just stopped.
Do you want us, do you want us to camera off, Amy?
No, I don't hear it now. It might have had something to do with Amy's microphone. No, I don't hear it now. It might have had something to do with Amy's microphone. Okay, moving on to uh five point oh three, Paulette, would you speak to us about the?
Five point oh two.
Yes, Paulette, five point oh two, sorry.
Yeah, I can speak to this. So at the last board meeting, our finance director, Paulette Newbold, had shared information relative to the voluntary early retirement program. As our board knows, every year about this time shortly after we receive our certified enrollment, um, we evaluate, discuss, and decide whether to offer a voluntary early retirement program. This is, for many reasons, a very, very unique year. And although we came into the year in terms of year end in a pretty good fiscal position, uh, we have a lot of concerns that have been shared with the board over the course of the last couple months relative to what the future holds, and particularly as it relates to our tax rate and the potential for an increased tax rate. So the two things that um we've talked about in the recent past has been, number one, the special ed deficit, which grew by six hundred thousand dollars in part as a result of our purposeful decision to provide affordable insurance to all of our hourly employees um that qualify. Secondly, um due to our decision last spring and early summer to continue to pay employees that particularly special education paras who otherwise would not have been paid because they weren't working directly with kids during that period of time. And then, thirdly, uh based on our certified enrollment and the fact that we our certified enrollment ha- has declined uh for this year by approximately, I think it was eighty-seven students, which is going to then um invoke the budget guarantee. And both the budget guarantee and the special ed deficit are covered through the in- increasing property taxes on our local patrons. So uh those automatically shift into that mode i- in the event uh district doesn't have ample uh cash reserves, which we know within our district cat uh spending authority is seldom ever an issue. Having cash on hand or cash reserves is always a challenge in a property poor, kid rich district. So um because of what we believe to be um pressures on our tax rate needing to go up because special ed deficits fully funded through local property taxes, the budget guarantee is fully funded through local property taxes. And to pay for both the liabilities of past approved retirements as well as any new early retirements would be an additional ask of local property tax. We are recommending that for this year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, we don't offer the ver- voluntary early retirement program to incentivize uh people to retire early that otherwise might not.
Questions for Dr. Schutte?
So this is for next school year or this school year?
This is for this, offering it this school year for this year's employees.
Right, so twenty twenty-one then, okay.
And this is, I assume, Dr. Schutte, for all eligible groups?
Correct. We, you know, as we do every year, we would revisit it again in the fall of two thousand twenty-one to determine whether we'd want to offer it for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
May I have a motion to not offer the early retirement um incentive for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one?
Who for approval, Miller?
Seconded.
Miller, McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No. The motion carries seven zero. Now, Paulette. Our early staff.
All right, let me get back here. So we certainly wish that the board was not faced with the difficult discussions and decisions that we're talking about here tonight with early retirement incentive and um potential um staff furloughs or reduction in hours. Um, I can, I can promise you that arriving at these recommendations has not been easy. We all want to do what's in the best interest of our students and our staff, uh prefer- preferably regardless of cost. Um, and sometimes fiscal management becomes a difficult piece of the puzzle that needs to be considered. The last eight months have been difficult, to say the least, and um as Dr. Schutte mentioned, we have several concerns about the upcoming year in regards to property tax rates and our um our budget. Just to kind of um give you an overview, um our finance committee met earlier or in the middle of last week, I think, um to discuss um the options for our hourly staff during um the continuous remote learning period. We have several um several costs related to the pandemic. And moving forward, we aren't really sure how long this is going to last. Uh, we have received to date one point one million dollars in federal funding related to the pandemic. Um, to date, that has all been spent. Um, and as you know, you know, we continue to have costs come up that we're not budgeted for for this year. Amy just requested, and I'm not putting blame on Amy for s- for certain. Uh, but in our effort to provide continuous remote learning for all of our students and internet access and connectivity, um, we continue to pay over twenty thousand dollars a month for Verizon um and hotspot internet connectivity things. Um, we're paying about ten thousand dollars a month for our um help desk contract that we have so that parents have twenty-four seven access to get questions answered regarding uh virtual learning, online applications, things like that. Uh, we have numerous additional software costs related to covid and the virtual learning that we're not budgeted for. Uh, we also have a lot of transportation costs when we're operating in a hybrid method, and we cannot put all the, you know, use our buses to their full capacity. Um, we're running extra routes and such. So there are a lot of things happening behind the scenes um that we're not budgeted for for this year that um we have to consider when we when we look at the upcoming year and um some potential challenges that we may have. So due to that, um, we would recommend that we look at potentially or look at furloughing and reducing hours as necessary um during these closures. And what this means is some individuals that um do not have any meaningful work available primarily because they work directly with students all day would be a furlough. And and let me just give you a little bit of terminology clarification here, too. A furlough and a layoff are two different things. During a furlough, the district intends to continue any benefits that those employees are currently on. So there is no loss of benefits during those ti- during those furlough times. Um, if we were to lay people off, that would be a permanent separation from employment and benefits would not be available. This is just a temporary uh work shortage, basically, um for which benefits are still offered and and maintained. Yeah, so that would be our recommendation, and we are doing um everything possible to um to the greatest extent possible to keep people meaningfully engaged with students throughout the online virtual learning time.
You know, if we were to get another influx of money, because we know we have a lot of students that are struggling with this for with the virtual learning, could we repurpose some of these paras and have them meet with these students virtually to keep them up on their their coursework? I mean, is there a way to repurpose these, you know, so they're not? They do have purposeful work to do. We have work that needs to be done. We have paras in position where they can do that.
Part of our charge was to try to figure out how we could best meaningfully engage these employees and work who otherwise wouldn't be working when kids aren't in session. And so that that in large part was what we did last week with primarily the building administrators who oversee these uh positions and also directors and supervisors of any people in these specialized positions. So we worked really hard after the finance meeting where, you know, we came out of that with uh the feeling that we no longer were in a position of being able to pay people not to be working. And but on the flip side of that, we wanted to go to the nth degree to try to figure out how to meaningfully engage people who otherwise wouldn't be working when kids aren't in session to the fullest extent possible. So um we've got a lot of different employee groups that we're talking about here in different circumstances. I think it's pretty easy, you know, to see that, you know, school's not in session. We don't have nearly the need for bus drivers or bus monitors. So many of them may fall into that furlough group. Uh, we've had discussions about how we've had significant decreases in revenues related to our food service program in large part because of, you know, roughly a quarter to a third of our students have chosen online learning and they're not needing and or taking advantage of coming to the schools to get uh daily lunches when they're at home all ti- the whole time. We also have our secondary students at middle school and high school uh on hybrid. So they're two days on, two days off, and for the most part, most of them are not choosing to come get meals uh on the two days that they are off. And then at the high school, in order not to have large numbers of students gather in confined spaces, we've offered campus. So even when they are onsite, they have the option to get a lunch at school and to eat it somewhere safely at school, or they have the option to go outside of school, whether that means home or, you know, to a local restaurant or or not, or to a drive-through or whatever. So we just, we were needing to right-size the food service budget because from the point we went into voluntary uh remote closure learning last spring, we've ate through a lot of the reserves that we had built up over the years to accommodate continuing to pay people when really the demand for that work wasn't uh there. And unfortunately, some of the demand has not been there this this fall either. Um, the largest employee group that's being impacted with reduction of hours would be within our paraprofessional group. And uh those mu- uh the lion's share of those uh positions are special ed funded. Uh, we've seen the impact that we had when we chose to pay people, even though we couldn't engage them in meaningful work. Um, that, you know, for the month of March, April and May, that came to the tune of about two hundred thousand of our six hundred thousand dollar increased special ed deficit. That being said, we want and absolutely want what you just said, Jan, which is to figure out how we can legally and meaningfully engage them in the work and supporting teachers with the educating and the support that students need in a virtual modality. And I think, looking at that analysis, we have about ninety-six of our hundred and roughly hundred and thirty paras that would have some reduction in hours. Uh, we have thirty-five para positions that would not be affected at all because they can be meaningfully engaged for the whole time. That group includes special ed paras, study hall monitors. Obviously, we're not conducting study halls. Library assistants, which fall into that para pool. A health assistance, which I think we have figured out a way to meaningfully engage them with the nurses to monitor student as well as employee health during this time. And bilingual assistants, who I think we've figured out how to engage um to help make sure that all students are engaged, that are ac- able to access the learning from a language standpoint and that sort of thing. The timeframe that we're talking about is basically a seven-day timeframe because we agreed to pay everybody their full wages through Friday of last week, which were the first two days of remote learning for our elementary and intermediate students. And part of that decision just came because uh this has all come upon us so quickly. And you asked me three weeks ago if we would be heading into remote learning mode prior to Thanksgiving based on the numbers that we were seeing of student and staff absenteeism, as well as our county positivity rates. I would have thought that we would have been able to make it to Thanksgiving. But obviously, that changed in a hurry, and so we're still very hopeful that we're in a much better position with our employee attendance and or absenteeism to be able to come back into full school session as we left school with both onsite and hybrid learning on December first. But we can't hundred percent guarantee that's the case. And in the event that it's not, we're not able to for that reason or other reasons, we would anticipate a continuation of reduced hours for whatever period of time. We would need to continue to operate in a uh remote learning mode. To Jan's point about CARES funding, you know, when and if another CARES package would be made available, we could then, we would then at least have some flexibility to make some determinations on how best to use that money. Uh, when the initial CARES package came to us this summer, it was with the intent of covering expenses that were incurred during the closure last spring and helping to support student learning through the summer, like through summer school programming and such, or meal delivery and such. It was not ever intended to carry us into this school year. And unfortunately, there's been a lot of political debate at the federal level about the CARES package and how much it should be and what it should be able to be used for. Now that we're beyond the general election, there's a glimmer of hope that maybe something still will happen federally before the end of this calendar year. But I guess worst-case scenario would be, hopefully, something could be agreed upon after the what we hope to be a peaceful transition of power, both, you know, with the presidency and with the legislature uh in January, I guess, worst-case scenario. But, you know, it's hard for us to know for sure what we can and can't or will or won't do without knowing how much uh money that will mean for Marsh Towne Community School District and what what latitude that we'll have in order to use that, whether it be for salaries and benefits, whether it be um, what latitude that we'll have in order to use that, whether it be for salaries and benefits, whether it be to help support uh connectivity of students to the internet and home, whether it be like the last time able to be used for more devices to ensure uh connectivity and that sort of thing. So it, these are extraordinarily difficult times. I think the night, the good thing is that we're not talking about reducing jobs, you know, because of budget concerns. We're talking about reducing hours for a period of time until we get on back to where we can operate um with students and employees in school. Because it does look a lot different when we're in that remote uh mode. I think one example is that as we were talking through this with our principals in terms of the meaningful engagement of our paraprofessionals, we are finding that good portion of time, anywhere from an hour to two hours of any paraprofessional's day is oftentimes helping support some of those duties, whether they be before school recess, lunch duties, after school supervision, those types of things that obviously aren't necessary when school is not in session. Um, so I'm confident that that all of our people tried to do the best they could to try to come up with meaningful and reasonable ways to engage our employees to pay them as much as we could versus furloughing more of them or significantly reducing hours to what was specific to the special education needs. Um, but I I would, um, you know, I definitely support and I believe that our 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 district has a responsibility to be fiscally responsible while being also empathetic to the needs of all of our employees. This isn't unique in that I mean, there's uncertainty on our hourly employees parts anytime we have a weather-related situation. So if we have a late start or we have an early dismissal, tho- those times generally are not made up and haven't been made up. You know, over the course of the last five years, tho- those simply wind up resonating with lost hours for hourly employees for the most part. And then, you know, snow days, it just depends. Um, if we make up a snow day at the end of the year, then those hours get made up by the people that otherwise would have been impacted. But we've had situations where not all snow days needed to be made up by students. And as a result of that, um, there may have been lost hours as well. As uh one of the people that spoke at the beginning of the meeting mentioned, we did go to the nth degree to try to um, when we had to recalibrate our calendar based on the impact of the Dray show and our new start date following Labor Day, we did work to recoup those hours in 15 minute increments over time for hourly employees or our paraprofessionals, as well as figure out ways to meaningfully um engage our teachers and making up time versus having them come in for five days, for example, after the school year ends. Um, but everything has a limit and we've kind of reached that limit of being able to be creative in terms of meaningfully engaging them in work that they otherwise wouldn't do when school's not in full session.
Are there other questions or comments for Dr. Schutte or Paulette?
Could I just add something um quickly, please? The, the, just to, just to put another statistic in front of your face. Um, for the FF-CRA leave or like the the COVID leave, um, where, you know, if you're ill and awaiting test results, you get paid fully or if you're on quarantine or something like that. Um, those absences that we have, we do not receive um any sort of reimbursement for. And we have had well over 1,000 individual cases or individual uses of that leave. Um, and so we are um exponentially going, you know, through those leaves. And so over 1,000 of them, for example, just to give a number, are days when we have reimbursed employees. Granted, some of them are at two thirds the leave, uh but most of them are at full pay. Um, and we will not be receiving that um reimbursement. So that is a lot of unanticipated expense.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the recommendation to authorize the superintendent to furlough and reduce hours of employment of hourly staff as necessary.
So moved Heitman.
Second McGinnis.
Heitman McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries six zero. I believe Karina is gone. Okay. Thank you all. Paulette, let's talk about school budget review.
Let me get this recorded here real quick. All right. Boy, I'm just Miss Sunshine here tonight, aren't I?
Yes.
The next item, two items on the agenda are asking for authorization um to ask the school budget review committee for additional spending authority for two different items. The first item is our open enrollment out. Um, that was included in the fall count this fall, but was not on the fall 2019 certified count. If you recall, the money follows the students and the money um is comes a year later. So we are having to pay other districts for these students, but we received no funding for them. So we are asking for the additional authority. Remember that the authority does not come with cash. And so these two items are two items that have a direct impact on our property tax rate also because we will have to cash levy these um in order to get that cash back. We are only getting authority from the school budget review committee. They do not give us the cash. So the first item is for open enrollment out in the amount of 537,328.
If there are no questions, may I have a motion to approve?
So Aguirre.
Second, no one.
Aguirre McGi- Aguirre Miller.
Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. Moving on to the second school budget review.
And the second item is for ELL beyond five years. If you recall, we get funding to support um ELL for the first five years, and then the students serve beyond five years. We ask for additional funding for. Um, so we are asking for this in the amount of 1,004,646 for additional spending authority to support instruction beyond five years.
So moved Aguirre. Second, Heitman.
Aguirre Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries six zero.
Can I, can I make one comment on that, please? I appreciate your support on behalf of our English learners and I am so hopeful every year when session gets back in swing in January um in Des Moines, that people will understand that five years is not a magic number for students to become proficient in English. It's an arbitrary number that has some research behind it. Um, but for students that have multiple at-risk factors, including living in poverty, it takes more likely seven years for that to happen. And um the funding stream we have only allows for five years, and that's true for everyone across the state. And as you witnessed tonight, that's nowhere near enough time for our students in Marshalltown. We're continuing and our board members that run the law um committee heard this a couple of weeks ago. We're continuing to find ways to help our long-term English learners, and that would be kids who are at Miller um and potentially the high school that have been with us um since they started in our system. So I just wanted to say, if you have the voice or ear of a legislature, legislature, please let them know and and help us um get the word out that that is not um that is not um what our students' needs are indicating should be happening.
Thank you. Moving on to Allers Cooney, Paulette.
Sure. This is just a recommendation to approve um the agreement to employ Allers and Cooney as our bond counsel for the upcoming uh potential issuance of $10 million in sales tax revenue bonds for the high school and ants of HVAC projects.
Questions? If there are no questions, could I have a motion to approve the agreement to employ Allers and Cooney to serve as the bond counsel?
So moved Heitman.
Second, McGinnis.
Heitman McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries six zero. Moving on to board policies. We're getting there.
So at the last meeting, you reviewed the policy 203.10, board self-evaluation. Uh, B had that policy. We made some adjustments to that policy to align with our practices as well as um to align with IASB language, which was to change the word evaluation to assessment. And to just simply say that we, as a board, um do this assessment on a now you annual basis and recalibrate the board goals annually to reflect that.
I have a motion to amend 203.10.
Second, Aguirre.
McGinnis, Aguirre. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Karina is back, so the motion carries seven zero. Moving on, Dr. Schutte.
B, did that include waiving the second reading?
Oh, of course it did.
Okay, just for clarification purposes. So I think Sarah had the two new policies.
Um, 300 Statement of Guiding Principles for Administration. Uh, the recommendation is to change the title and align the first paragraph with IASB's sample policy as the text is very similar.
Are there any questions for Sarah at this time? That'll be Mark to come back.
And then 301.1, which is the new 302.1 Superintendent of Schools Qualifications and Recruitment. Recommend changing the title, policy number, and adding two specifications at the end of the last two paragraphs. The second sentence in the first paragraph would be deleted in order to complete IASB's initial sentence.
Questions for Sarah at this time? That will need to come back as well. Thank you. Dr. Schutte.
Yes, we have uh three policies and or regulations that um are in the attendance arena, student attendance arena. We consulted with our attorney Drew Bracken uh to ask him to review our attendance policies and to make any recommendations for improvement that would better reflect um digital learning or remote required learning in order to provide us with um more support in the event that we need to address uh the lack of engagement or lack of student accountability uh in a remote learning arena, whether it be students having chosen to do online learning or whether it be issues experienced within hybrid and or um remote continuous required learning. But mainly, we wanted to be able to better address online learning when it wasn't happening or it wasn't happening at the degree of success for students. So um, we've got policy five, we have an exhibit 501.31 attendance requirements. We have 501.3 dash E2 attendance regulations. And we have policy 501.5 attendance center and program assignment. Uh, Drew indicated all these policies were really solid. He just made some minor recommended amendments that will come back before you at the December 7th board meeting for approval. It will put us in a better position to help work with students and families to decide what is in the student's best interest for success moving forward, especially in the second semester.
Any questions for Dr. Schutte at this time? All three of those will come back for a first reading at the next meeting. Paulette?
Sorry, I have a question.
Okay.
So any of these policies want to prove, will they go into the attendance policy in our district?
These are the um, these are attendance policies.
Okay.
That we have in our district.
Okay.
We're just looking to amend them to better reflect the multiple um scenarios, especially as it relates to remote learning or online learning.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Paulette?
All right, 701.3 is um simply a change in terminology regarding one of our funds. Accounting terminology has changed, and so we are now calling the um producer or the, it's a custodial fund now. So I would recommend that we waive the second or wait um.
Market is reviewed.
Yeah. That works.
Is there any disagreement with the board? 701.3 will be marked as reviewed. You have 705, 2R1.
Yes, so.
1R2.
Yes, so um as you're aware, we are in the process of submitting a um request for public assistance through FEMA for the COVID-19 emergency, and they have several policies that they require um be adopted by those receiving um FEMA assistance. These are two of those um which speak to uh procurement processes that we have in the districts, in the district when it comes to federal funds. Um, and then the other one um is regarding making sure that when we contract with vendors that they are not employing um any employees that are not able to be working for them.
So these are new policies that will come back December 7th as a first reading.
First reading, yes.
Are there any questions for Paulette at this time? Okay. Paulette, the treasurer's annual settlement.
Yes, you are probably used to seeing this on a monthly basis, but the Iowa code does require that before um we have our annual meeting or organizational meeting each year that you are presented with the depository balances at the end of June of the preceding year. So what you have in front of you is the June 30th, 2020 depository balances.
Questions for Paulette? I have a motion to accept the balances as presented.
So moved. Second, Heitman.
Miller Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. The next is our annual appointments. Um, I am seeking the recommendation is to approve Paulette Newbold as our board secretary and board treasurer for the 2021 school year and to approve Allers and Cooney as a school and attorney for the same time period. Are there any questions? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved Aguirre.
Second.
Aguirre Faltis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Paulette?
All right. So this is the point in the meeting that I will open the floor for nominations for board president for the upcoming year.
Would like to nominate B. Is that right? We just nominate you again?
Second.
B, do you consent to this nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will declare the nominations closed. And.
Is it possible to take a motion for a unanimous ballot instead of going through the voting process?
We certainly can do that, yes.
Okay, I think that'll save time.
I would ask for a motion to accept a unanimous ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Heitman Aguirre?
Yes, ma'am. I think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Getting there.
Same. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you all. Just trying to move things along for you, Paulette.
All right. Do you want me to administer the oath of office now?
Can I just say I've read it and I will?
Sure.
Okay, I will. Moving on to the election of vice president, how do you like this, folks? Is it this moving along? Nominations are now open for vice president.
We nominate Sean again?
Are there any other nominations?
Taking the nomination, Sean Heitman.
Could I have a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Sean?
So moved. Move Miller.
Aguirre Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Do you want to read that, Sean, and say I will?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Moving on to school board committees. During the next time before our next meeting, would you please look at the committees that you've served on, the committees that you'd like to serve on, and give me your top five choices? Because you will be on at least three committees. And I don't guarantee you'll get all three, but I'll go for it. So I will send out, would you like me to send out to each of you the reminder of what each of those committees are responsible for?
Yeah, that'd be great, B. Thank you.
That'd be nice.
Okay, all right, I'll do that tomorrow and get me, let's see, the Friday before our next meeting, our next meeting must be about December. What?
Seven.
So I need it by December fourth, then? Get me your top five choices. And I'll do my best. So then at the next December meeting, we can have lists of committees that you will be serving on for this next year. Are there any questions on that? Anything to add, Dr. Shutey?
No.
Mr. Sotters, any items of note?
Well, first, I think that may have been the fastest annual meeting I have ever been witness to. So congratulations are in order. But yeah, so we, it's obviously been extremely busy on the communication side here in the last week with our change to fully remote learning, required remote learning. And as Dr. Shutey mentioned earlier, we obviously hope that that does end on the twenty fourth and everyone can go to Thanksgiving and safely enjoy Thanksgiving and then come back and we can go back to our in-person and hybrid model. So on my end of things, I'm continuing to work on the C T E video series that I had mentioned in a previous meeting. That involves reaching out to alumni and just setting up interviews with them for a video project to highlight our career in technical education opportunities here in the community and the, and link those to the educational opportunities we have here at Marshalltown Schools. I am still in the process of reaching out and getting answers from folks who I have listed. I've gone through our alumni catalog that the district releases each year. So that is continuing. I'm hoping to get more traction on that here this week and by the end of the month. In a similar vein, the STEM Best Video Production is also going forward. We, Joe Frohman and I were able to meet with our students late last week, obviously, before they went to this new virtual learning model, fully virtual learning model, I should say, and we adapted some assignments that we were going to give them as far as learning about camera work, types of frames and that sort of thing. So I'm excited about that, not just because I love video production and I love watching students learn all about that sort of, that art. But I am also looking for students as potential recruits to help with, for them getting work-based learning opportunities, but potentially to help with some of the district communication tasks that are obviously things that students would be capable of doing after a process of recruitment and judging, you know, their willingness and readiness to help with certain tasks. Whether that be, you know, writing a news story occasionally, getting photos, obviously taking video in that sort of task. So it's great experience. It gives them actual pieces of work that they've worked on that they could give to, you know, using college applications or use with employers down the road and that kind of thing. So so I'm excited to look into that further and continue looking for students who may be interested in that sort of opportunity. So other than that, the other thing I wanted to mention was that I'm continuing to evaluate and look for ways to upgrade and improve our current communications marketing plan, which comes to an end officially at the end of this calendar year. So there, it's a great plan. It is put together very well, but we are there's just several pieces of it that are in need of updating, and so I'm looking forward to continuing that process. I'm anticipating using programs like Thought Exchange, obviously with the help of Dr. Shutey, to inform, help inform that planning process. And then I'm also looking at previous documentation through our partners at Vision Marshalltown as they helped with the formation and some of the ideas that went into the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty strategic plan. So all of the things I've mentioned are, you know, they're processes that don't happen overnight and I'm working on them every day, every week. It'll bear its fruit and it'll be, it'll be great. All three of those. So that's what I had for tonight. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I would just say that one of the things that was actually in our board book study that was talked about was the importance of doing communication audits. And so I'm hoping that our A A can help us to facilitate a communication audit of our school community to see at both the building and district level how we can improve upon where we're at currently for the future. Just for those, that general communication piece, I think then the engagement pieces and the marketing piece is a different part of that.
Yes, we, and I have reached out to Beth Strike and she, I believe she sent me documentation. The last time the Marshalltown Community School District did a communications audit through the A E A, according to her records, was back in two thousand and seven. So we're in very different times now and it would be, it would be good definitely to get a, an updated audit. And that would obviously be, be a big part of informing the updated communications and marketing plan. So.
I do have to say that I hope the audit from the A E A is far more professionally done and strategically planned by the A E A than the one in two thousand and seven was. I was obviously a principal at the time and the communications audit was a crock. Principals were totally taken aback by it. Comments were made like they walked into the lobby of one school and dead leaves from one of the plants in the hallway were laying on the floor. Good grief. Let's get to the real nitty gritty here. I don't want from the A E A crap like that that was in the last evaluation. I'm sure you can find a copy of it.
Yeah, and in the meantime, during Andrew Potter's tenure, he kind of conducted his own, you know, without invoking help or support of the A A. So we just need to recal, we need to reevaluate how people feel about our communications and then use that information to help guide further improvements because I'm, I know that we're in a lot better place today than we were five years ago, or I believe that to be the case. But what do we need to do to even further improve?
Well, it's unfortunate that Beth Strike also chaired up that crappy audit that we had. I will be really disappointed if we waste the time and effort and get another report like we got before. So please understand that the district's communication with the A E A has been less than optimal when Beth Strike has been involved.
And Adam's got a network of U E N communication directors too that he can lean on to find out how they've moved forward with that with or without A A.
Okay. I think the finance committee met and I think we've talked finance until the end of time at this meeting. So I don't think there was anything else unless Mike or Sean think that there was something discussed that was not tonight.
Looking for me, B. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to thank Jan and Karina for their participation in the diversity pre-conference workshop. It was something that our board can certainly gain some insight from. And I think Dr. Shutey shared the workbook and the PowerPoint presentation in his news and notes. So take time to browse through those because I think that Jan and Karina can both say that we learned lots that would be useful to Marshalltown in that workshop. And the reminders.
Just real quick, B. So I think I was the only one that attended the U E N virtual banquet last week.
How was the food?
Yeah, there was no food unless it was created by yourself. I think I had macaroni and cheese actually. But during the meeting, they approved their legislative priorities, which I believe you'll be representing us with I S B in doing so.
For our night.
As part of the delegate assembly, their, the U E N priorities that were established were student opportunity equity, closing the gap, the opportunity gap. And so that speaks towards finding a needs-driven formula for funding schools, particularly as it relates to low-income, non-English speaking and at-risk students. Addressing the administrator and continued staff shortages, mental health services, which has been on the forefront for us as well, and I S B. Local authority or district authority versus state mandates. Most notably with the remote, the decisions to move to remote or virtual learning versus onsite learning. Emphasis on the importance of public education and the importance of seeking equity for students and families as it relates to internet connectivity and access, which obviously has been amplified during the COVID era. So those were the things that rose to the top of our urban education network schools through the surveys that they ran.
Okay.
I kind of had a question about, well, when I read through it, it also says something about the funding for the A E As at three point two five percent. What does that mean?
Well, the A A's are funded through flow-through funds that run through the districts to provide the services that they provide to help local school districts. Des Moines is the only district in the state of Iowa that is large and that has been deemed large enough in order to accommodate many of those services without leaning on the area education agency. So basically, the U E N has said they continue to support A A's being funded by the state in order to help provide support to the local school districts.
I guess I'd like to see us do some more evaluation on what the A E A actually does for us. Because I know, at least in the area of special education, part of the original purpose behind the A E A is when we first started having special education teachers, a lot of them weren't fully trained because the law was new. But now we generally get people who are fully certified, which makes me wonder, some of the A E A role, at least in special education, may no longer be necessary. And has that ever been? You know? I just think it needs to be reevaluated.
And it has been within the last five to six years for the reasons that you've stated and what the what the outcome of that study was, was that districts on their own would not be able to afford the services that are provided to help support both, the primary one would be special education, if the A A's did not exist, but the A A's provide a lot of other support services as well with access to high-quality, low-cost professional development and other things that districts can pick and choose what they want to make access to. They also have some purchasing powers collectively that in pricing that we access for different things. It could be food service, it could be technology purchases and other things that we would not be able to get as a standalone, but I'll see if I can't get my hands on that assessment and analysis that that was done to help guide that.
I'd be interested in seeing it.
Matt, does the A E A hold the gatekeeper and waiting position for special ed?
They do. So they're responsible for the independent educational evaluation process to determine eligibility as well as they are the entity that weighs I E Ps to determine the amount of funding that goes with. as well as they are the entity that weighs I E Ps to determine the amount of funding that goes with every service that's submitted.
Okay. Again, the I A S B convention this week on the 18th and 19th. School finance workshops are being held in November and December. You can read those on the agenda if you're interested. Our board book study for the next meeting will be to the end of the book. SaAC meets November 23rd. As of now, Karina and Jan will be on that committee. Is that virtual, Lisa?
I think I just go and meet you.
Sorry, yes, it is virtual. And then invite one out today. Hopefully you got it.
Okay, and the Law Committee is also Karina and Jan, and they meet in May. So that may change. It is virtual as well. The Auditorium Foundation meets in April. Sean has a couple of policies for review for our next meeting. Our next meeting is on the 7th. What have we done tonight to improve the education for all students in the Marshalltown District?
We've allowed more access to folks that may not have necessary devices at home to be able to learn remotely from home. That was big.
We've right-sized some pieces of the budget for a variety of reasons.
I think the supplemental aid for English language learners beyond five years is a pretty big deal.
Yeah. Reaching out to legislators on that would be important.
Okay, any items for future agendas? My quote tonight comes from Robert Frost. You all know him as a poet. And he says, "Education is the ability to listen to almost anything without losing your temper or your self-confidence." Sometimes that is so true. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second, Hernandez.
McGinnis Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We are adjourned.